Good evening. My name is Tammy Robertson and I am the Chief of the Title Wetlands Division within the Water and Science Administration at the Maryland Department of the Environment. I will be the Hearing Officer for tonight's Public Informational Hearing. Also in attendance from the department is Melissa McCanna, Title Wetlands Division Project Manager. I would like to welcome everyone here this evening and thank the Galesville Memorial Hall for the use of their facility. If there is anyone who has not signed the attendance sheets, please do so before you leave tonight. These sheets will be used to notify you of our final decision and provide you with a copy of the hearing report. And will also be used to identify those of you who wish to make a statement at tonight's hearing. Those statements will be heard at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation. As a courtesy, please turn off all communication devices or place them in silent mode. We are conducting a public informational hearing pursuant to subsection 5-204 of the Environment Article and Code of Maryland Regulations. The purpose of this public informational hearing is for the applicant to present the proposed project and title wetlands impacts that may be associated with the proposed activity. In addition, the hearing provides the department with an opportunity to solicit additional information from interested persons. This hearing is not a contested case hearing under Maryland's Administrative Procedure Act or a public hearing for water quality certification. While I want to stress the fact that we are here to share information, we will have some structure to the hearing in terms of the order and length of the various presentations. Please be advised that it is not necessary to read a statement to make it part of the official record. Written comments will also be accepted and received the same consideration as any oral statement. In fact, for accuracy, if you have written comments to read into the record, please provide us a copy of those comments before you leave. As stated earlier, this hearing is being recorded. The statutory authority for issuance of a wetlands license is Title 16 of the Environment Article annotated code of Maryland as implemented under COMAR Section 230204 and subtitle 2624. A state title wetlands license is issued by the Board of Public Works consisting of the Governor, State Treasurer, and Comptroller of the State of Maryland based upon a report and recommendation submitted to the Board by the department. In accordance with the Maryland Constitution, the Board is the sole body with authority over state property, including state title wetlands. In its proprietary authority, the Board has the right to grant a third-party a license to construct or conduct an activity in state title wetlands. According to Section 16-202 of the Environment Article, the Secretary of the Department shall assist the Board in determining whether to issue a license to dredge or fill state wetlands. The Secretary shall submit a report indicating whether the license should be granted, including any recommended terms, conditions, and considerations. After consultation with applicable federal, state, and local entities, issuance of sufficient public notice, and conducting any requested hearing, consideration of any public comments received, and consideration of any other information the Secretary thinks advisable. In making its decision, the Board is guided by the public policy of the state considering applicable ecological, economic, developmental, recreational, and aesthetic values to preserve title wetlands and prevent their destruction. I will now read briefly from the regulations so that it is clear how we are going to proceed this evening. An applicant and any interested person shall be given an opportunity at the informational hearing to present facts and make statements for or against the license. Questions may be asked of and directed to the Hearing Officer, but cross-examination may not be conducted. The hearing is not a contested case hearing under Maryland's Administrative Procedure Act. The order of the presentation is determined by the Hearing Officer and may be conducted as follows. Introduction of the activity and participants by the Hearing Officer. Presentation of the proposed projects by the applicant. Questions about the activity. Statements by public officials. Statements in opposition. Statements in support. And then concluding with closing the public informational hearing by the Hearing Officer. The Hearing Officer has the authority and duty to conduct a full and fair public informational hearing, act to avoid unnecessary delay, and to maintain order. Regulate the course of the hearing and the conduct of the participants. Extend the time period for providing supplemental written comments or information for inclusion in the hearing and roll upon a request for a continuance of the hearing. At the close of the public comment period, the Hearing Officer shall present an official record of the public informational hearing and comments. In summary, the Maryland Department of the Environment is conducting a public informational hearing for general title wetlands application number 23WL0638, submitted on July 19, 2023 by David Harris, Vice President of Edwin A. and John O. Crandall Incorporated. The application requests authorization for the following. Replace in kind a 253-foot-long-by-6-foot-wide pier, three tapered 14-foot-long-by-3-foot-wide finger piers, and 12 mooring piles, and to construct a 125-foot-long-by-6-foot-wide pier extension, all extending a maximum of 380 feet channelward of the mean high waterline at an existing bulkhead. South Pier. Replace in kind a 88-foot-long-by-23-foot-wide platform and a 171-foot-long-by-6-foot-wide pier, and to construct a 121-foot-long-by-6-foot-wide pier extension, all extending a maximum of 380 feet channelward of the mean high waterline at an existing bulkhead. The purpose of the structures is to provide additional safe mooring for the barges used by the owner. The proposed project is located within the tidal waters of Tent House Creek at 1014 Benning Road, Galesville, Maryland, 20765 in Anarundel County. There may be additional concerns related to issues that are beyond the scope of this particular hearing. I ask that this hearing remain focused on issues associated with the title wetlands license. Now is the time that we usually introduce elected officials. Are there any elected officials here this evening? We'll move on to the next section is the presentation. So now, I would now ask that the applicant present the proposed project. I would ask that questions please be held until the conclusion of each presentation or statement. Will the first speaker come forward and introduce yourself?
David Harris with Crandalls. As stated in the little flyer we had back there for everyone to pick up, just wanted to emphasize with the permit as...
Tammy.
Tammy, I apologize. It already stated, we have, this is a blow up of that paper. You can see we have the existing piers and then the red lines that go out all the way down here to the 380 feet, which we're looking to get the piers extended for the areas where we're allowed to work and operate and keep the barges. Just, everything else would remain the same except these two separate pier extensions going up 380 feet. And in the flyer that you have, there's two different color reds. The more red color takes it out to 355 feet, and we have the burgundy color that takes it out to 380 feet. Because there was some questions if we could shorten that ending, and after review and everything, we could probably pull that back to 355 feet if that would be agreeable and everything. So we, that's, from preliminary, the Corps of Engineers and their round of questions and comments, the U.S. Coast Guard has already given a favorable recommendation for the permit request stating that it is not a, there are no hazards to navigation, there would be no lights that have to be put on the piers because of where they would be positioned or anything. And that's pretty much the summary of the work.
All right, do we have any questions?
I live on Mulberry Lane, 54 feet from their property. And your last presentation, there was a couple things that were brought up. I don't think I got a clear answer on. One was that you were indicating right off the bat, the whole time, is that this is strictly for safety. Improved safety for handling the barges, correct?
Yes, that's the primary reason. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. My question then is, why wasn't this a safety issue 10 years ago? My next question is, you have indicated multiple times in your discussion here that you all are entitled to 380 feet of creek based on some third of the width of the creek on a rule or something, but nobody has seemed to be able to provide that in writing or an explanation of how you came, arrived at that. So that's what I would like to, two things I'd like to have answered.
For your first question, with regards to safety, yes, that is the primary reason for safety, and it also gives us the ability to tie up the barges alongside of them for better storage and stuff. But as you can see, like with these three, well, at least these two barges here primarily, and then the flyer I sent out to everyone, they're beyond the end of the existing pier. So by having the pier extended down, the workers can get onto it in a storm condition or whatever, or heavy rain or something like that, a lot easier than getting into a little small boat than getting out to the barges to then climb up from the boat up onto the barges.
I've been watching them for 10 years, and they climb from barge to barge. So if one's sticking out past the pier, they don't climb down off of a barge and walk out the pier and climb up on the next one. Once they're up, they go from barge to barge, and that doesn't hold bar when you talk about the third row down the middle. They have to climb over things to get to the third row, which is always where the activity is.
Yeah, you do have to, but there's various barge configurations, how they're set up there and are at particular times. And specifically with this photo is a prime example that the access would have to be by water because this quarter of this barge is just off the outside of the wooden pier. So we'd have to access that either by, depending on how the barge is floating at the time, getting into a boat and then up the barge. But if the barges are all tight like this, yes, we do walk from one barge to the next. But the other question you also mentioned is about 10 years ago. Why didn't we do it 10 years ago? 10 years ago, we did not need to repair or start rebuilding the existing piers that are 45 years old down there. And now we're to the point where the simple repairs no longer are economical because the amount of work that has to be done, so we looked into doing a full replacement. And during that time of pulling the permits, we're applying for that now. As far as your regulatory question, I'll leave it to MDE, the regulatory agency, to respond to that.
One point. I don't think any of us here on the creek have any problem with you replacing in time. It's the expansion. So now you're talking that the expansion is a safety issue, but the other part of it is because the piers are unusable. But you haven't slowed any work down. It hasn't stopped any work from happening. And I'm just saying, it sounds like there's, you know, the right answer is trying to be supplied to get the permit through. It doesn't seem to make sense with the way it's being presented as it's strictly a safety issue. We're just trying to be more careful with how we do this, but no, we really just need to replace the piers that are in bad shape.
I haven't, I don't believe I ever have said it's just strictly a safety issue. There's multiple reasons. Safety, I noted numerous things, Mr. Harvey, but...
And those concerns could be expressed during the comment piece of the evening's hearing.
Regarding the 380 in regulatory, I'll hand the mic back over to the MDE.
All right. And so for, the regulatory requirements identify the quartered distance across the waterway. It's a quartered distance, but we have the ability, if there is not a navigational hazard, it doesn't impact navigation, we have the flexibility and the ability to approve something that extends beyond the quartered distance. And that is usually done in, not in a silo at MDE. We usually do, we coordinate with the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Boating Services, the U.S. Coast Guard, the Army Corps of Engineers, where they may consult with their navigational branch. So it is the quartered distance is what is identified in regulations. All right, so other questions? I'm gonna, you had your hand up first. I'm here still.
Thank you. My name's Mark Steinle. I have lived here all my life. I was born and raised here. I started sailing a boat on this river when I was 10 years old, 1960. FYI, I am a tugboat captain, and I work for boats McLean's and for Johnny Crandall occasionally, The thing that everybody needs to understand about the dock situation is when all the barges are home, which is most of the summer, because when the only time they need all their barges is when they're doing a dredging job, which they do for the county and state when they win the contract, they have to spud the barges down off the end of the pier. So they're already sticking out there just as far as that dock's gonna go. So if you want it to be safe for men to access the barges, it would be nice if the dock could go out as far as the barges go. The barges are there. They have a right to put them there. From their east boundary to the west boundary of Smith Brothers, that land is all zoned, marine, industrial. One thing about Crandalls I'd like to say, they have been employing people in this area and paying their health insurance since 1930. Now, a lot of people have come here and they don't like the change in their view, and they have driven up the prices of the property here to the point where working-class people here can't even afford to live here anymore. So, you know, let's think about that a while. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, so right now we're in the question phase of this evening's hearing, so if we have comments, that'll be the next phase.
My name is Ellie Bassett. I'm your local river keeper with Anarundel Rivers. I want to thank the department for holding the hearing. I want to thank the applicant for presenting a second time. I appreciate your time tonight and for the opportunity to provide comments. A question I have is that previously it was said that they can no longer put barges on the end of the extended pier, and I just heard that that's their right to do so. I'm just curious if after the extension, they will be allowed to continue to put barges on the end so that it extends even more? And if that's not allowed, who, where do we find that written down somewhere?
That's the distance of, again, I have uncertain...
And maybe, and if I can get the department's opinion too. Thank you.
As I said at the prior meeting and in emails and other comments to people, to the point where we start becoming a hazard to navigation and they're extending out too far, that is when we can no longer do that. At the prior meetings, people were commenting about us spudding barges out in the creek and stuff, which those were all done legally by the other marine contractors in the area for the last couple decades and stuff. But we don't spud our barges out into Tent House Creek. But to answer that, if the pier is to here, everyone wants to know what's preventing us from going further, it would be when we became, become a hazard to navigation. And by putting the barge out there, we would be a hazard to navigation at that point based upon the proximity to the creek distance.
And so, since they're gonna be beyond the quartered distance, we would consult with Department of Natural Resources and the Coast Guard and the Army Corps of Engineers. And so, a lot of the times, when we issue a title wetlands license, or the Board of Public Works in this situation will be issuing a title wetlands license, there would be a specific special condition that a lot of times says that no mooring vessels channelward of the pier. So that's how we typically address when it's been identified that the mooring vessels at the end of the pier is a navigational hazard, that we include it as a special condition in the title wetlands license.
Does that quarter, that quartered distance have anything to do with correlation to their willingness to put all back to 350 feet? Is 350 feet a quartered distance?
I'm not sure what the quartered distance is for this waterway.
285. No correlation, 285.
285. And I, without having like MDE identify what it is, because it depends on how you, where you measure from the shoreline. So I think it's...
Based on the bridge that they provided, that would be 285.
Okay. So, but we can, would want to confirm that with measurements that MDE has measured.
I thought you were going on record.
Okay. And I haven't looked at the file, so if that's been previously identified as 285, and Melissa is confirming, 285 is the quartered distance? All right.
I'm Mark Byrd, and my family's property is immediately adjacent to the Crandalls. I still don't understand where the 380 feet comes from and by what, what is it that allows the parking of barges extending off the piers, existing piers, up to 380 feet? What is the authority that allows that? Is it some sense that it doesn't impede navigation, or what is that?
He doesn't explain that.
So MDE doesn't regulate like where the boats, you know, in its current configuration, where they can be, we're looking at for what's being proposed, and if it is identified that it's a navigational hazard in association with the current license, then it would be identified that no mooring, no boats can be moored off the channelward of the pier. So I'm not sure how, it's an old property, so I don't know where the, and maybe the applicant can speak more on the history of the length, but I think the pier has been there since, I don't...
I'm not getting a sense that this is very clear.
I can't speak on the history of the site on how long it's been historically extending out to that length. I mean, our regulations didn't go into effect until the pier regulations until the 90s. And so if this existed prior to the 90s, then it's a grandfathered structure.
I understand that the...
MDE on the navigation of that.
So, complete yours.
I understand that the existing piers are grandfathered.
Okay.
What I don't understand is, does the practice of parking barges extending off of those piers, what's the relevance of that to the desire to extend the piers? Does the fact that it's been a practice for any period of time mean anything or not?
So the barges are not of regulated structure by MDE. So we're looking at where the pier is being proposed, and so we're looking at the channelward extent, which is greater than a quartered distance of the width of the channel, so we're reviewing it for a navigational hazard. So the barge placement would not fall under MDE's jurisdiction because it's not, it's a vessel.
That's because...
Or Department of Natural Resources. So that's not under our review of the actual placement of the vessels.
That water is federal public property. Anyone can use it.
All right. Do I have any more questions?
If you don't, we'll navigate.
Okay. I'm Jim Chandler. I have lived in here for about 10 years. So I have a question about the tugboat that when the tug comes in and how do you secure it currently? Because it doesn't have spuds to drop. How do you secure the tug when it comes into the outward part of the pier?
Well, the tugboat, if it would be out further than where we normally keep the boats, we actually bring, we don't need the tugboat out along the end for extended period of time, out towards the creek.
What's that?
It's, one, we have to access it quicker and easier. Two, the further in that we get it and tie it up, the calmer the water is...
So you have to tie it up?
Yes. And we tie it alongside of other barges, like in this instance, the tugboat's sitting all the way, way up here towards the bulkhead, because we also need to access the electric for our battery keep, maintainers and stuff, so that when we, when there's no more permit restrictions and then we actually can get out and do marine work, the batteries aren't dead at that time. So we typically always try and bring the tugboat in as close as we can.
But if it was a temporary situation, if you just tied it up out there to where there's just space on the pier?
Yes. That is correct, because we do have, there's numerous times the tug would be sitting out here at the end of the existing timber pier, because we have electric all the way out to the end of the pier and stuff.
I'm Lita Calva, and I live adjacent to the road that goes down to the Gravel property. My question is, is the impact of the noise, the construction, the huge trucks that back down the road, and the general day-to-day noise from the, is that totally irrelevant to this application? The effect on the residents who live around this, around Gravel Road? I realize that the zoning is what it is, but is the effect of the construction and the work and the day-to-day operation, which is quite noisy, is that totally irrelevant to this application?
So our review is really looking at the impacts to tidal wetlands. So noise concerns would be concerns that you would want to reach out to the Anarundel County Public Works for those types of concerns.
Problem of the bottom of the rocks.
So our environment's not relevant.
So everybody has like their jurisdiction, and so the county would be where those concerns are addressed. So we're looking at the impacts to tidal waters, those concerns. And we can, you know, Melissa, we work closely with state, federal, and county agencies, so we have contacts at the county that we can provide those contacts to. All right, I'm gonna...
Yes, my question has not been addressed at all in both presentations. When was the last time there was a sanding of the depth of the water on the Cumberland side of Tent House Creek? We're pushing the channel further out into the water, and with McLean and Crandall and Smith Brothers prior, they're pushing up mud. I have a four-foot sailboat, draft, draft, that's what the captain meant to say. And I've run it around, and if the barges come out further, maybe the tugboats coming back and forth will help make the water deeper, but I'm sure your department has not looked at that depth of the water on the Cumberland side. There's two shoals over there that should be addressed.
Thank you.
Tammy.
Crandalls does that directly, put down each state. Can I answer real quick? And I apologize if you've asked this before and I didn't answer. But even back there on the left-hand display back there, DNR did bathymetry surveys of the creek, up Tent House, past Smith, and up the Cox, I think it's called Cox. Cox Creek portion is... Cox Creek portion as well. So they have an extensive bathymetry survey that we were able to go online and get a copy of.
I can only tell you by example, I've run it around there in four foot of draft.
And so again, we're just asking questions at this time, and so statements will come later in this evening's hearing.
I'm Jim Day. I live here in town. My question is, if they're at the 380, which they're allowed now, if they did tie a barge on the end of the pier they're requesting, who enforces that if it were outside of 380? Who do they call? Who gets called? How's that enforced?
If they're outside of the...
Right. So if they have a tidal wetlands license that identifies that they should not be mooring vessels beyond the pier, then you would want to reach out to MDE's compliance program, because they're responsible for enforcing tidal wetlands licenses.
So they would call MDE?
Yes, the compliance program specifically.
I just replaced my pier across on Tenhouse Creek. And initially, it went to MDE because they thought we were adding additional. It was a replacement in kind. When I asked why was there any issue with, if I was going to add two or three feet, they said, "As soon as you do that, you would then be causing more shadow on the water, which then declines the marine life." Adding an additional 121 by six and 126 by six feet will darken another 1,482 square feet of water permanently. If H...
...person lives on it, I don't...
That's not from MDE, what you're reading.
What's that?
That's not coming from MDE.
What? This, I am reading from my notes of how many square feet they're adding that will shade the existing water. Is that true?
So typically, when we talk about shading, we don't look at the pier as the main stone as a shading concern. Once you go beyond six feet, that is considered platform. So that's when we start looking at platform space as potentially impacting submerged aquatic vegetation. But piers that are six feet wide, the Army Corps of Engineers has a different view on the maximum width of piers. And I think they use like the four feet wide as where they don't see an adverse impact to submerged aquatic vegetation, whereas MDE has six feet wide.
You also noted that the barges are a vessel, so they do not count in terms of creating shadow on the water. Is that true? And one other thing. So based on enough new linear footage that they will be adding to these new extended piers, will they be adding more barges? And will that then increase, even though they're a vessel, and they're there during the summertime, basically there, will that cause any additional damage to the wildlife that's there?
As noted before and everything, the water depth out there is eight feet, and there are no submerged aquatic grasses or vegetation out there where we're asking to extend the piers to. So there are no impacts to SAVs and stuff out that far.
And I'll just speak on, you were asking if we look at vessels. Vessels are allowed to be placed over submerged aquatic vegetation. We don't regulate vessels. Because we consider vessels are transient, that they come and go. Where we have fixed platforms or floating platforms are permanent structures. And so our regulations prohibit platform space over submerged aquatic vegetation.
Well, I mean, just on that, I mean, those barges, and what other people have said, that those barges are there all summer. So they are a huge shadow impact. And, you know, allowing that to be extended does increase the shadow area by 40% of what's there. When you look at barges that sit there, they're not, you know, yes, they move, but they're there such a majority of the time.
Are barges sitting there anyway?
Right. And I think, as somebody had mentioned, I don't think this area is mapped as submerged aquatic vegetation. There's been submerged aquatic vegetation in the area. So we'll come back.
I have two questions. The first one, could you clarify your characterization of the property as W2 light industrial? Because the county zoning map shows that about approximately half of the property is zoned residential. Is the county map inaccurate?
As you already have a copy of, Mr. Byrd, and as our parcel's a long parcel.
Right.
And everything we're dealing with is the W2 light industrial. And Exhibit C, when responses were given, and you were given copies, I even went to the effort to include the definition and where all the information could be found.
Right.
But we have been and only have been doing our marine construction work on the W2 zoned property.
I've seen all that, but is it not the case that the portion of the property up to Gettysburg...
Is residential property that portion of your property?
And that has nothing to do with our request to extend the pier's length.
Okay. So it's...
It's all commercial and need to work on. And I think it's a little bit, if you knew any like county-related questions, but in regards to like the planning, so how something is done. So again, if people connect you with the county person, that would be best, the response to that.
My second question. Looking at your photo, the arrow photo on the right, the barge that extends beyond the end of the pier that's to the right in the picture, if parking the barge in that way is a safety concern, it looks like there's about a barge worth of distance right next to the pier. Why didn't you pull the barge up? In other words, why aren't you using the space that you already have between the piers?
Why aren't they all home?
I understand that, but in this particular example, you could have parked that barge where it is, or it seems like you could have pulled it up.
But then when the barges are all home, the illustration shows where they happen to be.
The next thing I see is barge could be in there.
This is in April 2016, one. And back in the back have several spanning, several years with Google same as before. But it just depends at what time we're bringing in barges and stuff like that. And if one's been pulled out, based upon the size of that hole, there had been a barge right here. We have probably moved it, moved it out to another location. But these are not all of the barges that we own.
How many barges do you have? Are they all home? How many are you dealing with?
Twelve to sixteen, plus other small things. But they all fit into that area when they're all home.
All right. We're gonna, maybe one more question, and then we'll...
And this one's just for you.
The reference keeps coming up. The addition is an addition. The pier replacement is in kind. When I had my pier replaced, the people, the legal people told me, "One new piling, and in kind is out the window." Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't know, because they keep referring to this as an in-kind project and an addition. But the in-kind would not be in kind with the addition.
If they're...
Correct. So if they're installing, if they were, if they wanted to come in and just install exactly what they have in place now, within the exact same footprint, they would not need to come into MDE for an authorization. It would be replacement in kind. So they're just installing everything that is existing, it's within the same footprint, as long as it's been previously authorized, or it's a grandfathered structure. So if it had never been authorized before, or it was installed prior to the regulations, then that doesn't apply. But in kind is, if it's being installed in the exact same footprint, it wouldn't require authorization.
And the reason I guess I'm confused is because I think one of the earlier communications from Ms. McCann indicated that this should not be referred to as an in-kind project.
I think the, she's just referring, but in the project description, it's just referring to a segment of the pier that is being replaced in kind. There's pieces of the project that is, that is being constructed in the exact same footprint. And then they're extending, and that's new, new work.
What's a barge understand about that?
So...
It's a combination.
So there's the existing, so they're not tearing everything out and then doing a complete reconfiguration, new work. They're keeping the same footprint, but just taking it out, reinsta, placing it in the same footprint, and then extending beyond what is already there.
You basically said that there was fourteen to sixteen barges now that they own. When you extended, how many more additional barges would be added?
I don't know.
I want to hear him say that.
Well, that's, so this gentleman here was patiently waiting, raised her hand. I'd like for her to ask her question, and then we'll move back to you.
I'm Jeanette Curry. I'm part of the Byrd family that is right next door. So David, I have a question for you. So other than safety, why do you want to extend your piers?
So you can safely access barges that are already there?
To repeat again, for numerous reasons. You have the safety. Two, it gives us the ability to be able to tie up the barges without having to drop spuds.
Or if there are games come up, you can do that.
And we could also have the spuds and tie them if we're preparing for a storm event. But it gives us the ability to tie them up without having to drop the spuds. And every time, as Johnny explained at the last meeting, when the spuds are dropped there, it takes a lot of effort to then move, take for instance, move the crane barge out to the barge to pull the spuds, to then be able to remaneuver it and stuff like that. But we would be able to access the barges a lot easier, and nothing is going to increase in the size of the operation that we're doing down there.
So expansion is not a reason, is that correct? Expanding your operation is not a reason you're wanting to extend your piers?
We can't expand our operation any bigger than we are. I'm not following your, I'm not understanding the question about expansion.
All right. I think there was a question on the current configuration allows for X number of barges. And then somebody wanted to know, what is the total number of barges after the, if the work was authorized? So is the number of barges that can be housed here, is that going to change pre and post-construction? This was a question from a gentleman back there.
It would still be the same, to answer your question, the number of barges down in here. If we had all our barges in here, and everything was tight, you'd have between the two piers, nine barges tight, right then and there. And then down here, you have the balance, balance of the barges on the, this side, fitting down, all the way down to the bulkhead, along the bulkhead down past here where we keep the sectional barges. And the sectional barges make up four, because they're all, can be four individual barges. So when it's configured as a 30 by, 30 by 60 barge, it's made of actually four separate small barges.
All right. I'm a little, do you have a question, or do you have a comment?
I have a quick comment.
We'll let comments for the next segment of this evening's hearing. All right.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question to follow up on the expansion question. So my question is, at what point in time did Crandalls expand to the point where you had to start tying up barges at the end of the pier to make it an unsafe setup? So in other words, at some point in time, you didn't have that many barges because you didn't have to extend out that far. Is that right? And then, but yet you expanded to the point where now you need to do that. So I guess my concern is that at some point in time further down the road, you might decide you need to expand further, and can then start tying up barges beyond the 300 feet.
Should a game go beyond that certain distance? That's, this vote was in a few months to delegate. We'll just have one person kind of speaking, and if Dave wants to pass it off to somebody, he can, but...
Wants to get to read it, right?
380 is the distance for how far we can go. At that distance, we're 100 feet from the edge of the channel. It could go a little further, but we're not looking to go further. We're not expanding. Everyone keeps thinking we're going bigger and bigger. This site is at its max. We've had it at its max for over 30 years. The entire time I've been working for Crandalls, it's been maximized. When we, this particular barge, we bought a new barge. That barge has gone. As we've replaced barges or buy new barges, something else is going, and something is replacing it. Others have asked about, "Well, why don't you go to Woodfields?" Unfortunately, Woodfields definitely would be a problem for us because it won't hold our barges, and we wouldn't be a hazard to navigation. We can't go down to Woodfields with the size of our operation. So to answer the next question that might be coming up, because some people did comment how Woodfields is such a great site. Yes, it is a great site. Unfortunately, it is not the right site for Crandalls. And the site that Crandalls bought in the 70s is the right site for Crandalls.
Well, you didn't answer my question in terms of when you expanded to the point where you needed to park the barges where they're there.
Over 30 years ago, I said, ma'am. My entire existence here at the company, that I've been working at Crandalls 30-some years ago.
Of course, like, yeah.
So you said that you could put nine barges packed in between the two piers. How many can you park on the other side of the southern pier?
The barges come in different sizes and different configurations. So when you're talking about the 110-foot long barges, three 110, 10 barges, it would get put tight. When I say tight, I mean squeezed up against the bulkhead, jammed tight against every other barge is 330. The way we came up with the 355-foot is to keep some distance off the bulkhead so the barge doesn't damage it, and a little space between each and every other barge so that a sideline can come off to safely secure. And that's why when we said we could go to 355, when people asked, "Do you need to go 380? Can you go shorter?" 355 is the distance for that. But taking the long barges that are 110, if we filled it up with them, that's nine barges, three rows wide, three barges long. That's how I came with the nine for that. But with smaller barges, you, it might be different. Like, this is a 32 by 60, and we have some 30 by 90s. They all are different, but everything's still going to still fit in the same footprint. And I honestly don't know what I can say else different, so that everyone understands that.
He's the owner.
Okay, yeah, as long as you're...
It's also, it gets to be efficiency. We do a lot of work with the county, the state, and every time we get a job, they save money to do other projects. Because we were low bidders. We spend a lot of time down there... We spend a lot of time down there because sometimes we have to move three barges to get one barge where we need to get it. So we need to like keep an aisle way open. All the work is done on the front end. And as far as someone says, you walk up and down barges a lot. Well, I do now because I pick the one that's closest to the water. I'm not climbing that high in the night to get up on a barge and get to the tugboat. Then that's where the safety stuff comes in. So that's also efficiency so we can get more jobs, so the guys can have work. It's all doing business. Thank you. Johnny, you've got to say one more. Did we add or are we going to do barges?
There's one that's fine.
Sorry, I'm still looking for the answer to the question of which you can park on the other side of the pier. The reason I'm hung up on it is you talked about having 14 to 16 barges. Did I get that right? Okay, if you put, if you can, when they're all home for the summer, when you put nine in between, that leaves five to seven. Do you have enough capacity to park all of your 14 to 16 existing barges now?
I thought I already answered that, but the answer to that is yes.
Okay.
That's why I said we, that we're at the point where we have to get rid of a barge to add a barge.
So when they're all home during the summer?
No, the, sorry, to repeat, the, for the 14 to 16 barges, and they do come in different sizes and configurations. They're not all, all big ones, but everything we own fits into this configuration down here. They're, they're not all home at the summertime. Sometimes there are, it's a rare job, a rare job when the barges will be where there are zero permit restrictions. So we do have jobs sometimes that allow us for that. But the majority of times, by the time you take the fish spawning, the SADs, the wild waterfowl restrictions and stuff like that, there is a smaller window when work can actually be done on the majority of the tidal waters of the Chesapeake Bay. But sometimes our barges are gone, like this past summer. The sectional barges I commented about, we pulled them. We were out doing the lake dredging job that had no permit restrictions. So those four barges were gone because they were, they're truckable.
All right, saying no additional hands, we'll move on to the comment section of this evening's hearing. I will now call upon members of the general public to make statements. I will begin with any statement in opposition to the proposed project, followed by statements in support of the proposed project. When I call your name, I'll pass off the microphone to you. And if I call your name and you are in support, just say pass and I'll circle back with you because we're going to start with those in opposition. Jan Byrd, and you have three minutes to provide comments.
I'm Jan Byrd. My family is part of the adjacent property, I'm a part of that family. And, you know, we've, you know, my family's been there since the 1950s. We've seen that property evolve over time. We're well aware that it was once Mr. Benn was at Oyster House and then in the 1970s, after Mr. Benn passed away, it was bought by the Crandall's and they've run their operation since there, since then. And it has grown tremendously over time. And I am really concerned about the impact that further extension is going to have on the creek. And quite frankly, I really don't trust the system to be able to enforce what the impact on the creek may be once the piers are extended. And it sounds like this operation has been operating at the pace that it has with the barges it has for 30 years. And if that's the case, it's been an unsafe situation for that length of time. So why now does it need to become a more safe situation as the primary reason for the extension of the piers? I have no problem at all with replacement in kind of the docks that they have there now or trying to change the nature of their operation at all. It is what it is. I totally accept that, but I'm really concerned about the impact of the extension of the piers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Susan Markcase, are your comments in support or opposition?
Opposition.
Can you state your name and your interest in the?
Yep, Mark Case and my wife Susan Case. We live at 1052 Benning Road, just a few piers down from the property. Primary concern for us is the potential expansion of operations, the noise, further extension beyond the end of a longer pier, if that could happen. I did hear the comment that, I'm trying to say how you wrote it, you could put in a requirement that there would be no more in the vessels channel wise of the pier. So if MDE elects to approve the project, we would ask that that be a rule so that it couldn't be extended 125 feet and then hang barges off the end of that. So that's the primary concern. Property values as well, I think, would be impacted by this. I had always understood that the rule for pier lengths was a one quarter of the way across or halfway to the center line. So the, being able to go to one third doesn't quite feel like it's a consistent application of the rules. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dennis Harvey, are your comments in opposition or support?
Opposition. Am I right in the right place?
Wherever you stand, it's right place.
I, I talked to a couple of the people and I sent some comments at the end of March and I didn't get a confirmation that you had received them, but some other people, it was like not everybody did.
Did you get this, did you get my email that said that this hearing was happening?
No, I got that secondhand from somebody.
So then maybe I don't have your comments.
Okay, I didn't bring a copy with me.
But, all right, but we can, we can work that out.
I'm Dennis Harvey. We live next door to the Byrds on Tenhouse Creek. So like I said, we're 54 feet from this. And just for you ladies and anybody else in the organization, I can remember seeing many pictures of the Washington Monument. And the first time I walked up and looked at it, I went, oh my God. So I would be, I would like to invite you all to come down to our pier and look at the size of these things. And these, this really doesn't do it justice. It's amazing how immense this, this whole thing is. The Crandall's are pretty much good neighbors compared to some of our other neighbors down here now. I've enjoyed watching their work over the years until the welding got to be fixed and then there's guys just down there beating on these things all day long. But I, again, I don't understand why now, you know, why now? You've been doing the same thing for how many years? It would seem that either expansion's coming or you've maximized your land and extending the piers can bring in another barge and use it for storage maybe. I don't know. I don't understand the reasoning, but I have absolutely no objection to you doing a complete replacement of what you have. My objection is to the extension.
All right, thank you. Mark Byrd?
Tenhouse Creek has historically accommodated a wide variety of uses over the years. Commercial operations, including Crandall's, Smith Brothers, and Woodfield and Benning seafood businesses, sadly now gone, have coexisted with the many people who have enjoyed fishing, crabbing, kayaking, sailing and other recreational pursuits. With maintaining this balance in mind, I'm concerned that the Crandall's proposed expansion will unnecessarily infringe on the rights that all the rest of us have to use Tenhouse Creek. Because the Crandall's already have two long piers extending into the creek, the area between their piers has effectively become an extension of their property, a carve out, if you will, and is effectively off limits for public use. Extension of the piers an additional 120 feet each would increase the Crandall carve out and effectively remove another 12,000 square feet and increase the area within the Crandall's control to nearly an acre. I do not believe that any private party is entitled to carve out a significant portion of the creek for their exclusive use, nor should MDE allow it. I think we can all agree that the Chesapeake Bay and its tributaries are precious resources that are and should remain available for all Marylanders and others to access and use. To this end, I urge MDE to reject the Crandall expansion.
All right, thank you. Mark Steinman? Are you, you're in support or?
I'm in support.
All right, well, we'll catch you in a minute here. And then Steve Sharkey? Are you in opposition?
Yeah, thank you. So Steve Sharkey, I own the property next to Crandall's and this is my boat here. And, you know, extending these, the piers and the barges is going to have a significant impact on our property, our access, our navigation to our dock. You know, we've heard a lot about how the Crandall's assume that they have allowed, that they have the rights out to 380 feet. They made that up. There is no basis for them to claim that they had the right to use this, that this wasn't an impact to navigation. That is something that the state should have been looking at and they should have seek permission for, if that's what, how they view it. Now, when they extend out further, there really is nothing to, you know, if they're going to use their own judgment about extending the, extending the piers. And I will say, these are not here all the time. And they're not here all the time during the summer. We've lived here for 25 years. This is a Google Earth picture. If you look in history, this is the only one that has barges out here. And, you know, they are very rarely there. So they are not just business as usual. They are creating a new permanent extension and impediment on the surrounding properties and extending that into the waterway. Also say, you know, they claim that they operate within this. This is a swamp right here. Now you can see their barges are actually outside of their property line and extending over the swamp on the other side, the wetland area on the other side. They have no way to control runoff on their property. This is a marina. And we've talked about all these vessels, both pleasure and barges that they have there. It is a marina and they are expanding the marina and it needs to be considered under those circumstances. And I don't think I've seen anything where they talk about really do an analysis of the water quality impact, noise level impact, pollutants and related inputs that go into a marina evaluation. And it will be an environmental impact. We talked about the greater shading of that area. And it is not just those piers, right? It is the barges. They bring dredge material in on these barges. Dredge material can have significant metals and contaminants that they're unloading onto dump trucks. They have no way to control runoff when it happens. I've seen them, they clean off the equipment. They dip the, you know, the bucket that they're using to unload that. They dip it into the waterway. So there's all kinds of potential contaminants that come into our waterway as a result of this. And I totally agree with the impact of use of the, you know, the waterway in general. There are a lot of small sailboats, the sailing school with small children in boats throughout the creek. So the increased barge traffic that they're talking about certainly has an impact.
So that was the last person that had signed up to speak that opposition. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? If not, we'll move on to those that would like to speak in support of the project.
Yeah, I want to speak to the.
Okay. If you could state your name and your interest in the project?
My name is Mark Steinman. I've been a resident here all my life. I own waterfront property on School Creek and I have sailed and boated on this creek since I was 10 years old. The aforementioned addition is going to provide a pier where barges mostly always lay anyway. The idea that they are blocking out a section of the water in between two piers, let's go look at West River Brook Harbor. They're blocking out 300 foot, through 300 foot piers and all that water is theirs. Same with Archie Yard. Same with, you know, any big operation around here. Because they need to say, we're on a bunch of piers out and all the water in between those piers is theirs, pretty much. I mean, you can run in there and sift if you want. You know, like I say, I run tugboats for both companies out of there. I run tugboats for Crandall's occasionally. I run tugboats for McClans. There's no problem getting past there. There's no impingement on navigation. And to me, one of the things about the small piers and extra barges is the Crandall's do a great deal of dredging in creeks all the way from the Magathie River, the Severn River, the South River. This is done for the county and the state. If they win a contract, they go up and do it. That's when they need all those barges. And it's a service that they do for the county. They make money on it, but it's a necessary service. And if you want to have your creeks kept deep enough for you to use the water, you're going to need, and when you go in there and the pier's too short and you've got to get so-and-so barge to go do such-and-such a job and you've got to move six barges to get to it, I've done this. I mean, it's real. It's a waste of time. And if the barges had a pier to lay on, you wouldn't have to do all that. So anyway, like I say, it's a space where they're already taking up and they have a right to take it up. And they're not going to extend paths into the navigable water. It's not legal. They can't do it. So this company's been working here since the 1930s. They hire a lot of people. They've done a good job. And I just don't think it's fair to pick on them like that for a bunch of people that came here with a lot of money.
All right, do we have any other speakers that would like to comment on supporting the project? All right, if not, we'll move on to the conclusion of this evening's hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I make one word just additions?
You have three minutes.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, very much.
But, you know, because one thing I forgot to mention too is that the concerns about this have been longstanding. When they purchased the property and originally proposed their, their piers, they, the community was very concerned about it. The community had them reduce the size of the piers to the current 250 feet in exchange for supporting them getting dredging rights. They signed a letter that I've entered into the file where they gave up their rights to extend beyond the current amount. And now they are trying to revisit history. They have simply grown too large for that small parcel. Thank you.
All right, and then if anybody has additional comments that they think of afterwards, the hearing will remain open until the close of business on Monday, May 6, 2024. All correspondence must be postmarked or emailed by this date. I have with me a limited number of sheets explaining how to submit additional comments. Please forward any additional comments that you would like to make for the record to the Maryland Department of the Environment, Water and Science Administration, Title Wetlands Division, care of Melissa McCann, 1800 Washington Boulevard, Suite 430, Baltimore, Maryland 21230. The letter, there's notification out there on how to provide comments on a sheet of paper as you walk out. And then Melissa has her business card, cards on the table too. So that has all of her point of contact information too. After the hearing record closes, the department will review and consider all of the comments it received during the comment period. If necessary, the department may request additional information from the applicant to address certain comments. After all relevant issues have been resolved, the department will make its decision and final report and recommendation to the Wetlands Administrator for the Board, who shall then present the proposed project for decision at a public meeting of the Board in accordance with COMAR, Chapter 230204. The Board's decision will be final and there will be no further opportunity for administrative review. Any person with standing may petition for. Any person with standing may petition for judicial review of the Board's decision in the Circuit Court in Anarongo County. The petition for judicial review must be filed within thirty days of the Board's decision. We appreciate your interest in the project, and thank you for attending the hearing. The time is now seven twelve, and this hearing is now adjourned.